Could you decipher my Sanscript there?
Okay.
We still got some chairs over here.
Oh, okay.
Can you just have to get stuff up front?
Oh, yes. First time you get to sit in the front row, is it?
Uh-huh.
Yeah, it is. President. How you doing? Well. Warm.
Yeah.
All right, it is seven o'clock. We'd like to call the meeting of the Dickinson County Planning Commission to order. It's our September 10th, 2013 meeting. Dustin, will you do a little call?
Diane Landers.
Here.
James Headstrom.
Here.
Jennifer Elliott.
Here.
Molly Wolf.
Here.
Anita Fulp.
Here.
All right. Next thing on our agenda is to approve the minutes from our August 13th, 2013 meeting. If you all had a chance to review those minutes. Any changes or additions? If not, do I have a motion to approve the minutes?
Second.
It's been moved in second. If that would approve the August 13th minutes. All in favor, raise your right hand. All right. First of all, I'll mention that all of those of you that were nice enough to show up tonight, there's a sign-in sheet back on that table. If you'd please sign in for us. Your name and your address. And before we move forward with conditional use permits, there's a couple of regulation rules for our meeting that we'd like you to follow. First of all, you are absolutely invited to speak about the issue that you've come to hear about tonight. We encourage you to do so. We ask that you raise your hand or approach the podium and state your name and address for the record. Our minutes, our meetings are videotaped and put on YouTube, Dustin.
Yep. Just like the county commission meetings.
Just like the county commission meetings. So just please be aware that they will be taped. Please, we encourage all comments, but if somebody else has already kind of hit the points that you wanted to hit, we still encourage you to stand up and make your statement. Please be calm and concise and try to keep your comments brief. For each conditional use permit, we will have the applicant speak first and then we'll ask for public comments and then the county, or the planning commission will discuss those and then we'll take any additional comments from the applicant. With that, we'll move forward with conditional use permit DK-13-151. And that is from owner Melvin Mills. Mr. Mills, are you here tonight?
Yes, I am.
Okay. Will you please stand up at the podium and tell us a little bit about what you're applying for here?
I'd like conditional use permit for maintaining my cars on my property that I repair. I usually buy two and repair one and eventually get rid of the second one down the road somewhere after I've pretty much salvaged whatever's usable. And I've got some muscle cars that I've bought and I intend to restore eventually. And I've got a couple military trucks as well. And I'd like to get a couple of them for just nostalgia, I guess, or make fun of parades. That's pretty much, I've kind of got them scattered here recently, digging some out, moving some around, haven't got them put back. They're not as neat as they once were, but... Pretty much. My son and I have been working on them for a few years, different ones. My family's drove most of them that I have rebuilt, so it's pretty much, I don't resell any as far as commercially for anybody else or for own use and...
Dustin, I apologize if I skipped you in the preliminary report.
No, it's fine.
Can you give us your background of working with Mr. Mills for this condition use permit?
Towards the beginning of July, I was contacted by the Kansas Department of Transportation about a violation somewhere along Highway 18. They said just off the area. They said that the owner of 3030 Daisy Road was in violation of their beautification department. Essentially, there was a salvage yard or a very large amount of dead vehicles stored on the property within 1,000 feet of Highway 18. KDOT has a rule about salvage yards within 1,000 feet. They all have to be certified through the state. In order to get certification through the state, the county has to approve them. And this is part of that process. You know, he has to go through the conditional use permit process. And if we approve him, then he can move on to the state for their issues. But the very first step of that is going to the county. And so Mr. Mills made contact with me shortly after KDOT did about the violation. He had some questions and stuff, so he got on the phone with me and I sent him a pack of information and started the process of the conditional use permit. The culmination of what you see before you.
The planning commission has any questions for Mr. Mills?
I'm trying to orient myself to the map that's up here. So the proposed site...
Give me just one second and you'll be able to see it.
Okay.
This is just north of Highway 18. This is Highway 18.
So the proposed site on this property, if you bring that back up, is along the north edge of the property?
Yes.
Okay.
How many vehicles are currently sitting out there? Is that an accurate picture that we saw on the screen?
This is from, the photography is from 2010.
It's pretty much constant. I mean, I've hauled up a few that I've parted out, but I still have the majority of them, yes. Then I have a windbreak that goes along the... There is approximately 250 foot long. And then I was going to screen the west side and the north side and put all my vehicles so they're out of sight.
As far as any, like, fuel storage, any oil, any, anything like that, do you have any of that stored on the property? I mean, are these all vehicles that, how many of them run and how many of them are you taking pieces off of, I guess is my question?
No, if I'd stick a battery and gas, probably half of them would run. The other half are, it's to the point where, you know, I've taken something off that it won't move or run, one or the other. And I do have a couple barrels of used oil and I usually discard them, get them pumped out or haul into the landfill for just the end of the year normally. But no large quantities, just...
If that windbreak is 250 foot long, I'm not a real good judge of distance, but it looks to me like you're close to the 1,000 feet from Highway 18. How far is it from 18 to your property edge?
To the windbreak, it's a little over 1,000 feet.
That's in line.
To the, to the edge of the property, though, I suppose, is that Dustin? But the south edge is less than 1,000 feet. How much less?
The south, the south edge from there right of way to the property line is 800 feet. Roughly, the...
Windbreak is 1,000?
The windbreak is right at 1,000, about 1,100.
And you can see him from Highway 18?
With KDOT's rules, on a property within 1,000 feet. So if Mr. Mills owned 80 acres and that property touched within 1,000 feet, they would still consider it violation because it was in, that property was within 1,000 feet of Highway 18.
Did you say you were going to put a screen around part of it?
Yes.
Okay.
Ten, eight foot.
The screening is just like solid fence line?
Right, okay.
What's the contour of the land from, from the windbreak there north? Is it flat? Is it go downhill?
It's slightly slopes to the north and the east.
Okay. So have we addressed runoff at all?
Sort of. The runoff there is an interesting issue also because of the feedlot to the north. So there's kind of the culmination of issues there. The runoff from the proposed site wouldn't be necessarily as bad if the cars were reduced, but I don't believe that it's been entirely discussed. Or at least discussed in mitigation.
The reason I'm bringing that question up, if all the vehicles were drained and they're just sitting there for you to work on, that's one thing, but if they got fluids in them, then fluids are going to follow the natural contour of the ground.
Right. The oil and antipathy's been drained out of them.
All of them.
Other than the ones that run.
And there's your... I'll give you your comments when I see them.
What was your estimate of how many vehicles you have out there right now, total?
That are non-tagged or...
Total.
Forty. I hate to give you an exact number because I haven't really counted.
And I don't know if you can really see it there, Molly, but you're talking about a two-foot drop from the, from the tree line to the property line.
Which is roughly, how many feet? You didn't, about 300, didn't you?
From the tree line to the property line, you're talking 85 feet.
How much?
Eighty-five.
Oh, okay.
So show me again where on the property, if he's allowed to do this salvage yard, where on the property is all of that stuff going to be moved?
Inside this area where the screening is.
Okay.
The natural screening there and there is what's proposed.
Okay. Is there a timeframe in which, if this is approved, that this is going to have to happen, that the moving is done?
KDOT originally gave Mr. Mills 60 days, except because we had to put him in front of the county, the planning commission. They extended it to, after we were done with the hearing, they'll put forward their permit requirements.
And their permit requirements, then, will he be checked on periodically? Will they check on him once?
They, they check on it roughly every six months because he has to apply every year for a license.
Okay.
So...
Dustin, is KDOT's main concern mainly screening? Or do they have, you know, a regulation on the number of vehicles that they always got up to?
Their regulation mirrors ours in anything more than nine is considered to be a vehicle graveyard or salvage yard. And so what we permit him to, they'll maintain, but they have, they work with KDHE in terms of, you know, the amount of vehicles that are out there and drainage, that kind of thing. For us, I have in the conditions listed for no more than 20, that, and I figured that would suit with KDOT and, and us in terms of the amount of vehicles that are out there. The, the big issue with KDOT is that they're kind of the superseding regulatory authority here. What we do here, if KDOT were to approve it, KDOT has more stringent stuff than we do. And that's why in the conditions I also put to abide by state regulations because we can't supersede their requirements. For instance, ours, we don't have a height requirement on screening. They have at least eight, eight feet. So they have a lot more stringent stuff in that aspect. That's why I'm kind of defaulting to KDOT if, if it were approved because they're the ones who would handle it since it's within 1,000 feet of Highway 18.
I was curious, where did we come up with the 20 number?
It was, it was kind of my number since he said that about half of them ran when we talked. I figured about 20 would be, because by, by our regulation, if you can put gasoline in them or a battery and you can drive them, that counts. But if they're non-highway titled, that doesn't. So that's why that's in there as well. So I figured that's about half. That would be about the ones that run or don't run. That gives him the flexibility to keep the ones that he knows he's going to work on, but to also kind of clean up the area.
Is he okay with that number? Twenty is good.
Do we have any question, more questions for Mr. Mills at this time before we take public comments?
Not at this time.
I'd invite anyone from the public, if you've got a comment regarding this conditional use permit, please stand up at the podium and give us your name and address.
I'm Charlotte Clark. I live at 3170 Daisy Road. And I've heard the discussion here and I was wondering, is there going to be somebody that will go out there and check these vehicles, make sure that they have been drained of oil and gasoline so that there is no leakage? And I really don't want this to go through because if you allow him or whoever votes this and says, "Okay, Melvin, here's your permit," is he going to be allowed to haul more junk and more junk and pile it clear to the sky above that land where everyone can see? Or is the law saying he has eight feet? These are my questions. I live out there. It's a nice area. It's farm country. It's cattle country. It's not junk country. Those are my comments.
I have a question, ma'am.
Yes.
For the board, in relation to this, whereabouts is your residence from where we're looking at here?
A mile and a half north. I see this every day coming in and out.
We drive down Daisy Road.
That is my access to the highway.
So if those vehicles were confined to that area and screened in, would it make it more visually appealing than just having them scattered out there now?
Well, I don't know how many he has in there. I see quite often that more and more is being hauled in and, because it's parked in his driveway before it ever makes the weave. I just don't think it's safe. I don't think it's safe for our environment. Our water tower's right there. Our water's there. That's our resource. We have to have that. So I'm going to say I disagree with him having a permit. I'm always, also been made aware of that he was asked to clean up his mess. And instead, he chose to take this route instead of cleaning up his mess. This route allows him to make a bigger mess. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Is there anyone else who are denying?
Yes. How do you get parakeet hearing?
I can hear you.
Okay. I'm Roger Watt. I live in Fox River, Peneal Road, Adlin, Kansas. I own some property probably half a mile, three-quarter mile away from Melvin. I do rent a property adjacent to Melvin's property lines. I grew up in a farm. And Melvin's a good guy. But Melvin's got a lot of stuff with him. And it's, it's not only the vehicles, there's other aspects of other things. Come on. Things blow out in the field, things warm in pastures. And every time a storm comes up, we got, we got a problem. And I'm here opposed to allowing Melvin to have this.
Thank you for your comments. Is there anyone else? Please get up.
I'm Donald Carter. I reside at 2994 Daisy Road, Adlin, Kansas. 67410, phone number 785382751. I live directly south of Melvin. From the intersection of 18 and Daisy Road, I'm right there on the corner on the south. I guess my question, I had some questions, but I think they've already been answered. Other than environmental issues, I'm concerned. I think, I think so is the board. Also, I'm not qualified to bring up property values and that kind of thing. I'm not a real, realtor and I don't know what that would do. I ensure that it would have no effect with the county appraisers' valuation of my property this year, but we'll see. That's all I have. I like Melvin. Melvin's a good neighbor. I'm not really for this, this idea. I, I'll help him clean it up if he needs it.
Good evening. My name is Toby White. I live 395, Highway 18, Adlin. If I may, could I exhibit some pictures for you that were taken yesterday?
Absolutely.
And the board will take a few minutes to see these and pass them around. This is just various pictures that we took yesterday. Everyone had a moment to look at those? Give us a couple minutes after you got the pictures, will you? Hold it up. Basically, as you can see, there's more than just junk cars. We have a trash issue too. So as most of people already stated this evening, there has been a lot of trash that goes out on the property. Property belonged to my mom. I own the property to the, to the west of this. It doesn't get over there, but it does, it does attract on my mom's property. I, like everyone said tonight, Melvin's a good neighbor, but Melvin needs to address this issue and it's nice that the state and the counties addressing this. So I guess from that, I'm opposed to this very much so. And thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Would you like to keep those?
Can we?
We, we actually have to scan them in as part of the minutes.
Okay. Very much so.
Toby, I have one question.
Yes, boy.
Your dad here talked about, I guess you got some trash that comes off.
Yes.
You own the property to the south?
To the west.
To the west, okay.
Yes, I personally do.
Any issues there?
Uh, no, Molly, no. That's, most issues we face is like a south or north wind. And so, and then, and in the past, we've asked Melvin to, to address that issue. It's never been addressed, so we just have to take it upon ourselves to pick up the trash. So... Any further questions?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Any other public comments? I have one in front of me here that was this afternoon. This is from William Hoffman and it says, it's an email and it says, "Dustin, per our phone conversation, I would like to be on record opposing the salvage yard permit in question. Thank you, Bill Hoffman, neighboring landowner." So please also...
He owns the land on the south side of where Toby owns, he owns that section down there.
Grass, yeah.
Please note that, even though it's not, you guys don't know a copy of that in your packet? If you had a chance to review the packets, there's also another letter from another landowner adjacent. If you had a chance to review the packets, there's also another letter from another landowner adjacent. It's right after the aerial mount. Dustin, in the KDOT regulations, is there anything regarding other items, junk?
This...
Or do they primarily...
Their beautification stuff is pretty stringent, but it starts with mostly the cars. After that, they have to dictate what's a violation and what's not. Our regulations, as far as the zoning side, doesn't cover that. It covers the vehicles, abandoned trailers, stuff like that. It doesn't necessarily cover the trash side. That's more through the sanitary department. Of which I've talked to him about, and he's kind of waiting to see what happens here before we approach that. So, because if, again, if KDOT, if it's approved through us, it's still going to be approved through KDOT. They're more stringent than we are. So if it's not approved through us, then there's other stuff that we need to do. And KDOT will, the other side of this coin, is that if it's not approved through us, that means it won't be approved through KDOT, and there's still the head in regulation files. So it was their violation that started it, so they've got jurisdiction over it. So on both sides, KDOT will end up with the lead on this. It's just a question of for or against. So I imagine if it's denied, KDOT will still make them clean up everything. But if it's approved, he has a little bit more leniency on keeping the cars, so.
So then, for example, there's a picture of a large tank, a large round cylinder. Well, that one, and then there's another one. Yeah, that one. We have no governing as far as what happens to this stuff if we approve this salvage yard? Is what you're telling me?
Not really, no. We can add the conditions to it as a condition, but as far as salvage yards go, that'll fall under KDOT's jurisdiction. But we can say, you know, it has to be cleaned up, you know, you can't have loose debris. But you're also looking at how many farm sites do you have that have loose debris? They've got, you know, farm equipment laying around, that kind of thing. It's a question of precedent at that point. So the salvage yard, what we're looking at is mainly the vehicles and stuff like that. That's why the sanitation code covers trash and debris and that sort of thing. So it's kind of a hairline for us. There's a lot of stuff we could do, but a lot of stuff we can't do. So for this, it's pretty much specifically the cars and stuff that could be salvaged. That tank, could consider it salvage, because you can sell it for scrap wire and that kind of thing. But, you know, pallets, stuff like that, not so much.
So just to make sure I understand, if we would approve this, there'd be the area that would be screened? Twenty cars could be moved in there, but everything else could stay outside of it?
No, everything else would go. You don't have twenty vehicles on the property.
The other twenty inoperable?
Twenty inoperable vehicles.
Right, but the other... The other ones that run can be outside of the salvaged area? If they can run, if you can put fuel and a battery in it, does it have to be behind a screen?
KDOT will make it all go behind a screen, and so will we.
Whether it's operable or not?
Because that's where the salvage yard location is.
But it would just be, if we approved this, it would just be for the vehicles?
If we approve it, and the county commission approves it, and assuming KDOT approves it, it's just, what we are doing is just covering the vehicles.
And if we don't approve it, then KDOT takes over and says, "What can and can't be there?" Is that correct?
Right, yes.
When we say salvage yard, to me, Mr. Mills said he really wasn't looking for to do anything commercial on this site. But to me, that says, you know, we're salvaging pieces and parts and selling them.
Well, and that's why I include this description in there, under the... Which section is that on? Section C of the conditions to be considered. What we consider a vehicle graveyard in our definitions of the regulations qualifies. We use it as the same term interchangeably with salvage yard. So in the instance, he's applying for a permit for the salvage yard, but it would be for a vehicle graveyard. It's just the way that the definitions work. It's really clear as mud. But essentially, the vehicle graveyard is also a salvage yard, so we can't approve one without making it the salvage yard.
Okay. So you'd have the jurisdiction to go ahead and make it a commercial, more commercial than what he's planning on right now with us approving this?
No.
No?
Because in the conditions, it's not a commercial. KDOT won't care either way. They don't care if it's commercial or not. He just has to meet the requirements. It can't be commercial by our standards here. That's where we can supersede the state as commercial property versus regular property.
So the long and short of it is, one way or the other, KDHE and KDOT are in.
Yes.
And all we're really doing is deciding whether he's limited to nine, which any of us could do, or twenty.
Essentially, yes.
Essentially, that's the question. We do nothing, he can have nine, like anybody could. We approve it, he can have up to twenty. But either way, KDOT and KDHE are...
We approve it, he can have up to twenty, assuming they approve it.
Right, yeah, we're not, yeah, we're just, we're not, they still have to make their call.
Right.
But...
This is just to decide for Mr. Mills if KDOT will even approve it.
Right.
Without our approval, KDOT will approve it, flat out.
Yeah. But either way, they're still going to do their thing.
Yes.
As far as cleanup and KDHE and everything, because of the thousand feet and being seen and all that.
Yes. It's kind of an interesting scenario, because if it was five hundred, if his property was five hundred feet farther north, then we'd be able to say, "Okay, you can have twenty cars. You got to clean it up. You got to do these things." But for the most part, we aren't in jurisdiction there. That's why we have the limited to the cars, because it falls under KDOT's beautification department.
Well, Mr. Mills, I'd say from these pictures that you do have a lot more than cars out there. I was going to say about everything but the kitchen sink, but I see a kitchen sink here, so. Now, in your letter to us, you said that you'd like, you really are asking for, to store dead and almost dead cars to rebuild as project cars.
And then I have some that need to haul off, there's no doubt.
Okay. I was going to say, there are definitely some here that are beyond the project car stage.
I'll agree 100% with that.
Any further public comment? Please come up and state your name and address.
I have one. Do you really think half them cars will run in that picture? I mean, where they're packed in there?
Well, as Mr. Mills just admitted, you know, there are some that need to be hauled off.
Hi, Susan Watt, Toby Watt's wife, 395 Highway 18. I don't think we've talked a lot about, I guess I'm concerned about the cattle. And I think Wally was the one that brought that up, so. Would KDHE oversee that to make sure that our cattle wouldn't be subject to...
That's going to be in their jurisdiction, not ours. I can't tell you with 100% certainty that they would, but I know a lot of their stuff is, you know, drained vehicles, that kind of thing, for that purpose, so that the vehicles that are on property have to be drained. They have specifications they may, people attain to. I can attest to whether or not they'll do that for the cattle. I assume, since KDHE also handles feedlots right there. They're in the purview of the water and the soil for feedlots. They would probably take a little bit of special interest for them being right next door. But you'd have to contact KDHE for that.
Okay. All right, thank you.
How do we, in relation to his question, are we talking inoperable, meaning non-tagged cars? Or, I'm reading through the conditions that he's put forth here, and just wanted to clarify.
We actually have the definition for an operable vehicle associated in the report. Anything that's partially dismantled is considered inoperable. Missing wheels, that kind of thing. It'll, you know, anything that has mechanical defects. The only, it won't include vehicles that need only a battery and/or fuel. But if you have to put another part on them, you know, if you have to, if there's something mechanical that's causing them not to run, that doesn't count. You have to be able to put a battery in it, fuel in it, and go. Not a battery, fuel in it, and the solenoid and a distributor cap. It's...
Will that be also under KDOT's review and check?
Yes, that's where we got the definitions. So that's, we got those definitions from KDOT. And they go by essentially how vehicles are titled, because you got to pay insurance on the vehicle. You have to have a highway, you know, it has to be a regular vehicle that you can drive on the highway. That's the idea. That's why I also have the conditions that all of the vehicles either need a, they need to be properly titled, either non-highway, or you got to have a title on them and tagged. And if you have tags and a title, that means you've got insurance. So it's really expensive to keep those cars around if they run and you're not using them. That's also a thing from KDOT, so.
So if we don't approve it, he can have nine inoperable, any number of operable?
Yes, anyone can have any number of operable.
Right, he or anybody.
Yeah. You can sit around with fifteen cars in the yard that, you know, that are all tagged, insured, and can run. It's just the dead ones that you can't do anything about.
And I have fifteen that I tag and insure and operate, so.
I have a question from you, Mr. Mills. If I need a part for my '99 Chevy Blazer, at this point, can I call you and say, "Hey, do you have one sitting out there? I need a..." So none of that activity actually goes on? We're not selling parts to neighbors to fix vehicles and...
My boys, like I say, we kind of made project cars, and that's basically where a lot of it's come from. It's down the road over the years.
You said earlier you've got about forty cars out there, and that's total. That's the fifteen that you...
No.
...tagged. No, forty inoperable.
Right.
So you've got about fifty-five vehicles out there on your property then?
What type of debris are we seeing that's going into you, the neighbors' yards from this area? What are we having to...
Can you address the podium?
Please.
As you can see from the pictures, there's a variety of projects that have been started and not finished. So it's, anywhere from household trash, tarps covered on some of those vehicles you can see, shingles, tin. Just a wide variety of trash, let me see. And this is accumulation. This has been this way for twenty-seven years, so. And like I said before, I'm glad to state to him to address it.
Thank you.
Any more questions for Mr. Mills?
If you'll permit me, I would like to address the question that was brought up about height and the bigger mess. The whole idea of this, no matter what happens, whether we deny it or whether we approve it, is to, the idea is to control the size of the mess, and you can't go above a screening, period. That's why they, that's why they and we have the screening, so that you can't see it past there. No matter what happens, if we deny it or approve it, you know, the idea is for it to be cleaned up. If it's denied, obviously, it'll be drastically cleaned up without the screening involved. But if we do, then there would be a screening that you can't control. So I just wanted to address that question.
Thank you. So if we do approve it, and there's twenty cars that can be behind the screen, KDOT still would address the other issues?
Their beautification department takes over then, and if they don't, our sanitation department could. But like I said, KDOT says a lot more stringent in their beautification stuff than we do, because the violation was operating a salvage yard. For us, that's cars. For them, that's the tanks, the excess materials. That's what you would picture in a salvage yard. For us, it's cars. So KDOT's thing covers a lot more than just the cars. Ours can't, because of KDOT.
And twenty would be total, inoperable or operable? Is that correct?
Operable, you can't count.
Oh, okay, that's right.
Just inoperable.
He could have twenty, twenty behind the screening, and he could have the fifteen still operable, so.
Yep, as long as he can put gas or a battery in them, and go and tag and insure, those can be outside of the screen. But inoperable, they have to be behind the screen.
I'm going to make a comment. I think there's a lot, this is my opinion, I think there's a lot of issues with this application, or the request for the conditional use. None of us on the board live there. So it's a little hard to appreciate what goes on or what doesn't go on. This idea of what cars run and what cars don't run. I don't go by Jim's place every day and say, "Well, I wonder if that vehicle runs it setting in the yard." And so my point is, who's to say that these fifteen cars really run or not? Is somebody going to check them? And the second thing is, is anytime we get involved with numbers, who's going to be, who's going to be the person that goes out and says, "Oh, you got twenty-three cars today in there. Let's get three of them out." I don't think we have the resources for that, number one. And secondly, you know, I heard from several neighbors tonight, there's no dislike for Mr. Mills. They say he's a good guy, but I think the proof's in the pudding. Let's, you know, if KDOT wouldn't have brought this up, with this, I heard that comment made about this is a accumulation of twenty years. I think that's what I heard here.
How long have you lived there, Melvin?
Twenty-five.
Yeah.
Approximate.
So my comment is, is if KDOT wouldn't have popped the flag here, how long would this go on? Another twenty-one years? That's the question. You know, if you want to be a good neighbor, there's ways to do that. And I, in my opinion, I think Mr. Mills needs to clean up his property, period. And then, if he wants to request an application for a personal salvage yard, maybe. But there's some things that hasn't been addressed, you know, the sanitation, you know, and the floods. Is somebody going to go out there and check all the crank cases, all the radiators, all the differentials, all the transmissions to make sure the floods have been drained? Again, I don't think we have the resources to do that. But once, once it's in the ground, it's there, and you're not going to recoup it. And I mean, again, that's just being a good neighbor. If I live next, I don't mean to pull you in here, Jennifer, but if I live next to Jennifer, I don't think she'd want me draining oil out on the ground when I change oil and not containing it, and it's trickling down her way when it rains. And that's more of that being a good neighbor. And I think that two feet drop in eighty-five feet, I mean, that says it's going to head to the north, and that's headed right for that feedlot. Not a good, just not a good thing. I just, I spoke my piece. I just think... I just, I've spoke my piece, I just think there's a lot of issues here that we haven't addressed. Yes, he can have nine, and there isn't a whole lot we can say about it, but nine versus twenty plus fifteen, that's, that's adding to it. Now, we did a, we did a salvage yard permit several years ago, and I think that that time, it was close, it was an enterprise, and there was a limit put on the cars. And nobody ever went back and counted until somebody complained and says, "Hey, there's more cars there." And that's the thing. Who's going to be, who's going to be the control person? I know that kind of falls in your lane, but you're only one person, you know? When you do all the administrative studies for all of our permits, and you issue building permits, et cetera, et cetera, you know, I don't think we have the resources to put all these conditions and then enforce them. Not there. That's, again, my opinion.
Any comments? James, James?
Well, Wally, I, I agree, and I also can play the devil's advocate just a little bit. I, you know, I sympathize with those of you that do live around this property, I, you know, as much as, you know, I appreciate salvaging cars and fixing up old cars, there's obviously a lot more than just cars there, and it looks like it's absolutely become an eyesore. Unfortunately, what we're here to do tonight isn't to control the eyesore, it is to decide whether or not his conditional use application fits with our regulations. And as far as I can see, looking through what we call the golden factors that's addressed in our administrative report put together by Dustin, I don't see a whole lot of reason not to approve his application for a salvage permit. Now, that's going to cut the problem down in half, as much as I would like to say no, because there's already a huge problem here. And, but like Dustin said, that's not in our purview tonight, we've got to leave that up to KDOT to clean up the rest of that mess. But if someone came into us tonight with an absolute blank piece of land, and it fit the adjacent land uses, and it fit within the zoning to have a salvage yard, we wouldn't have a reason to say no. I think the current condition of the land really, you know, in my opinion, I'd like to just be able to say, "No, clean it up, that's a mess." But, you know, as we've talked about with other issues on this board, since I've been on the board a few years, and we've talked about somebody's right to do with their own land, you know, within, obviously, KDHE, you know, make sure that there is not leaking oil, you know, those kinds of things. But I'm not, you know, unless we can have more discussion, I'm not seeing a reason why we wouldn't be able to approve his permit for what he's asking for in motor vehicle graveyard.
Well, you, you mentioned it right there, is if somebody came in with a fair piece of property, we wouldn't really have a reason to refuse it, and that's kind of where I was headed. If this property was more presentable, we wouldn't have a reason to even disapprove of it, but I don't think that's where we're at.
I see what you're saying.
And I personally would like to know more what it is that KDHE is going to protect, do to protect both Mr. Mills and the rest of the neighbors. I'd like more information from them to see what their role is and what exactly it is that they're going to do.
I'm still waiting, and I probably will be until they make their decision.
They're not going to tell you anything ahead of time, what any of their rules and regs?
It's not my department, it's not my purview.
But KDHE is reviewing it, or...
KDOT. KDOT's in charge of this. When they come to salvage, KDHE plays a small part. But KDOT, because it's motor vehicle salvage, KDOT takes control because it's their beautification. If this was not within KDOT's area, if this was way out, and this was a salvage yard on a blank piece of land that didn't involve highway access, it'd come through us and still have to go through the state, but at that point, it's KDHE. The thing here that makes us a really hairy situation is the highway. That makes it KDOT first, KDHE second, us biting the tail hoping to catch up. That's where this becomes a really different issue, because KDHE is the one who says, "Yes, you can have a permit, now you can't." But KDOT, because of their beautification department and within the highway, they're the ones who say, "You have to apply for a permit, then you have to follow their rules and KDHE's rules." And since this isn't a legitimate location for KDHE, it's all through KDOT, KDHE's not telling me what they would require without an Open Records Act. And then, KDOT won't tell me what KDHE requires, because that's not, they're not KDHE. Welcome to dealing with the state.
You'd think they'd have some sort of precedent set.
They do.
Or what?
On pieces of land that's not run by KDOT. That's, that's the issue, is KDOT, is that this is KDOT's purview, and that's their, they're requesting the permit.
Well, you'd think KDOT would have some sort of precedent set somewhere.
They rely on KDHE to set the precedent.
So, it's a circular reasoning, kind of?
Yes.
Government.
I guess our hearts were part of it.
And that's, and when you look through, when you look through the admin report, on my, on my own personal, I'll get on my soapbox here, what you see in my admin report is exactly kind of what Jennifer referenced, is, is a straight, from a regulation standpoint, does it fit? Yes. Under regulation, I personally, when I do a report, can't take in condition of the property, I can't do any of that. That's why it's put in front of the board. You guys can take that into condition, you guys can take that into consideration. From a regulation standpoint, when I make the report, I can't. That's why it's put in front of the board.
Mr. Mills, can I ask you a question?
Sure.
You've heard all of your adjacent neighbors speak tonight, and they've all spoken well of you, but you've, you've obviously, this is not the first time that you've heard some of their wishes that you clean up some of this, what they call junk. Can I ask why you haven't made any attempt to do that before tonight or before KDOT?
Most of it, this first time I've heard, that it's been an issue. You know, I've picked up what little trash has blown around. I had some tin blow over, I went over, wiped it up, brought it back, covered it up with a lot more weight, so the wind didn't blow it over onto the property. And if there's any trash, we normally don't take our trash out and burn it until, you know, it's rained a little or the wind isn't blowing, so I don't know how much trash it should be given, so...
So, is there any way I can document that without calling employees and all that?
It's forever on record on YouTube now.
You know, I appreciate so much, because sometimes what we do isn't the most fun, and sometimes the comments are frisky, and I just appreciate the civility of everybody, and clearly, everybody likes you, you're a good guy, and that, you know, makes it probably a whole lot more difficult. But I'm, I'm probably on the same vein as Wally, that, you know, I, I wouldn't be opposed to looking at it, once, you know, once it was cleaned up. You know, I, I see, you know, everybody here is level-headed and sounds like common sense, but, you know, just kind of looking at the pictures and kind of listening to everybody, I would tend to agree. And I think as a zoning board, it's not just black and white by the rules and regs, we're not supposed to check our brains at the door. We're supposed to apply some common sense to it, and, and I think that, you know, for me, I would probably be on the same page with Wally, that, you know, gosh, you can have an unlimited number of ones that move the drive, you can have nine that are inoperable. And every farm or ranch has got an iron pile with some angle iron and other usable iron, and I don't think anybody's saying you can't do that, but, but I would be interested in looking at it again after KDHE and KDOT are satisfied, and, you know, the neighbors kind of come back and say, "Yeah, you know, gosh, it looks good, you know, it's got eight or nine inoperable there behind the trees, and the ones that run are, are working, and, man, he's been over, you know, in passion and picked up stuff a couple times, and four nothing's even blown over there." That, that would, that would be more interesting to me to, to kind of support that, but...
I have a question. If he makes an honest effort to clean it up, how long is it before, like, he could refile on that if he wanted to? Or is that filing good for indefinite? How does that work?
And this, for this, this application is for this, and then they'll take action, positive or negative, then it goes in front of the county commission. This is not the final decision, this is a recommendation to go in front of the county commission. County commission is the final say on our side. That's this application. If he wants to do it again, he has to reapply. Technically, he can do that next month if he wanted to. Normally, it's about a six-month thing with timing, because he got a little from county commission and everything, but it's, he can do it next month if he, if he wanted to. And, you know, or, the other side of it is, you can table it and request a clean, you know, request more information, but you can't really table it and request him to clean it up and put it back in front of you. He's got to make all that effort on his own.
Well, in my earlier comments, kind of to address James and Wally, I absolutely agree, after seeing the pictures, you know, my instinct is to say, "Clean it up." I wouldn't want to live next to that either, in deference to the neighbors' comments, but I, you know, speaking of just vehicles here, because again, you can't address the other things, you know, looking at the pictures, I'm not seeing a whole lot of those vehicles that are salvageable really as project cars, though I do see, you know, parts and things like that. But if we tell him to clean it up, he can only have nine, and then he comes back, you know, and reapplies, we're still looking at the twenty, if he reapplies. In which part of the scenario, Dustin, are we going to get the most bang for our buck from KDOT as far as cleaning up the rest of the town coming from? Because we could, we could limit it to nine today, and he could reapply, clean up the property, drag in twenty more, and then still have more junk. I mean, I'm asking about the other items that are out there.
If it's denied, it would be under KDOT's purview first, and if they don't do anything, or they, you know, they, they won't not do anything, they've already, it's already a warning case, they'll do something. The rest of it would be up to the sanitarian and myself. If it's approved, you're limiting the vehicles, but the other stuff could or might not fall under KDOT for, you know, cleaning up the mess and stuff around there. KDOT will be very, I don't, I don't, I can't really speak for KDOT in that, but I have seen in the past where they have been a lot more stringent in denials than they are in approvals, because it gives the air of, well, if they're okay with it, we'll work with it. If they're not, we won't. So, without that information from KDOT, I can't really give you an honest answer of knowing whether it would be more beneficial or not. I think in the opinion of everyone here, it would obviously don't be more beneficial to deny it, it's cleaned up. But again, on the flip side of that, playing devil's advocate, the whole idea is to clean it up, period. But again, we're just talking about cars. You could add a condition in there that the rest of it has to be cleaned up, that's in your purview. As far as the salvage yard goes, you can, you can label it in there as no miscellaneous junk anywhere outside the designated area, but then you have to worry about defining what miscellaneous junk is.
Well, and I took your comment to heart earlier when you said we're walking a fine line, because there's lots of other properties out there, you know, I mean, who are we to say what's junk and what's...
Exactly.
...farm equipment and what, you know, is great grandma's car that's sentimental? I mean, I don't think any of us want to sit here and hear that.
Yeah.
Let KDOT do their deal, and when it looks good, come back. Which I hate, because I'm a really nice guy.
As far as the fit, I, I'm not disputing the fit, as far as the fit for the property, but when I look at the, look at the conditions, they look good. But that's, in my opinion, that's what they are. They look good, because nobody's going to, nobody's going to check it. You're not going to go and check and see that they're all titled appropriately, who's going to do that? And where I'm, my argument here is, is what good does it do this board to put conditions on a CUP when nobody's going to go look and see if the conditions are being there? It's just paper. And that's, that's the problem we get into when we put things down, says, you know, "All must be reported to the Dixon County Appraisers Office." Who's going to, who's going to monitor that? You've got forty vehicles out there? Who's going to monitor if they're all reported to the Appraisers Office correctly? Ain't going to happen.
And if it does, it won't happen every year.
Yeah. And then, the other one is, and I'm not trying to shoot down, please understand, must, no, must maintain screening around the location of the salvage vehicle. So, what happens when we get a good thunderstorm and the fence blows down? How long does he have to put it back up to be back in compliance? And then, if he doesn't get it done, again, let me say he, someone, that sounds better, the person that's doing the application, how long do they have? And if they don't get it back in that time, then what happens? Et cetera, et cetera, and it goes on and on. And that's the thing.
There's entirely too many variables, is that what you're saying? That we don't know about yet?
Well, you know, you've got to have some conditions, that's why we have conditional use permit, but...
Right.
...they have to be, they have to be enforceable. I mean, just putting them down makes everybody feel good, that isn't what we're all about. We're saying, "Hey, these are going to be adhered to, and somebody's going to be checking to make sure you do it."
I know I'm new on the board here, but like, when you've done conditional use permits in the past, and you have conditions on them, how does it work? I mean, do you say, "Well, these are too many variables," or do you say, "Oh, so-and-so's going to be checking up on them," or do we say, "He looks like an honest guy, he'll probably do it"? How does it work?
Well, I mean, when you ask an applicant that, they're going to tell you. Are you going to put the fence up eight feet all the way around? Yes, we are, okay? And then, are you going to plant trees if that was a condition to block it? Yes, we are, okay? And they actually went out there and planted cedar saplings, okay? The three, four, seven died, so, it's dry, so what happens? There's no trees, and the conditions aren't met, but the applicant still goes on. That's what happens. You know, and the neighbors, I heard it here tonight, they don't dislike Mr. Mills. I think we've established that, that they don't want to be the bad person either. It's like Dustin gets a call, "Guess what, there's twenty-five cars out there, and he can only have twenty." Guess what, Dustin, there's trash out in my field, and he hadn't picked it up. That, he's going to get tired of hearing that. And that's my point, is it doesn't do any good to put that stuff in there if somebody's not going to enforce it.
On, on a general, to answer your question, for things like this where you check the twenty cars, see if they're registered, tag, there would be systems that we can set up for it, you know, like you have Mr. Mills report, you know, what his insurances are, stuff like that. But in general, I, every couple months, I go out and check on conditional use permits. But I check on not only the ones we've done recently, but all the ones that we've done up until now. That's from about nineteen ninety-eight to now. So, every couple months, I go out and check, you know, five or six of them, or fifteen, twenty, depending on, depending on the weather in the month, but, but a vast majority of them are things I can check on. When it comes to this, like I said, systems could be put in place for this. But Wally has a point in the, you know, where we don't have anything listed for the environmental side. But does KDHE, does KDOT go out there and do that? I don't know. I don't know if they check. I don't know if they check the oil, I don't know if they check the crankcase, or do they just say, you know, are these empty? Do they ask Mr. Mills or anyone else? Yes or no? And then leave it at that. You know, and then if there's a violation, then, you know, you're fined heavily because you didn't follow the rules, because somebody called you in. That seems to be a pretty good, pretty good scenario for how, you know, the state operates in their checking. It's by violation notice, not consistent checking. Certain things are, KDOT does a lot of stuff for tankers, stuff like that, they check those, but that's, that's what they're there for. So in terms of who would check this, me, about probably once a year.
And I think he's realistic about that. Yeah, you just don't have the resource, it's a resource, you don't have the resources to do it.
If we deny this tonight, is there any way, let's say he comes back and he applies again? He, he is a good neighbor, he cleans it up, he comes back, he applies, applies again. Is there any way that other salvage yard and, you know, car graveyard information can be provided to us to review so that we know, in fact, what did KDHE, what did KDOT do with this particular?
And once there's a denial of any kind through KDOT or KDHE, I can request information on it. I have to do it through an open records act, but I get to see why they denied and what information they can provide.
So we can find out about other salvage yards throughout the state, is my question?
But I have to have a case.
Before they will give you any information?
Before they'll give me information. So they won't tell me why someone, why someone was approved, but they are more than willing to tell me why someone was denied. It helps them prevent violations later in the future, but I have to have a case to reference to in order to give them information, which is why they weren't forthcoming about information for this, because they're not gonna tell me what they'll enforce, because if they decide not to enforce that, then it's on them. So I can get information if there's a case denial, yes.
Some more discussion, any more questions? All right, if not, I would entertain a motion.
Do we need to go through step by step the A through K so that everybody in the room understands everything that we've been talking about on pages two and three?
Well, we certainly can, I think we're...
So there's no questions?
Yeah, we're gonna have to kind of, you know, go off the fly though, because in Dustin's administrative report, I mean, he obviously is just using the rules and regulations, but, you know, he's faced approval of this CUP with the six stated conditions. So we can go through them. Whether approval of conditional use would be consistent with the intent and purpose of these regulations, the approval of conditional use would be consistent with intent and purpose of these regulations. Again, I'm just quoting Dustin's administrative report. B, whether the location of proposed use is compatible to the other land uses in the surrounding neighborhood, the current uses and zones of nearby properties are ag and ag with residences. Currently, the applicant has salvage vehicles all over the back part of his property. This proposed change in use would force the applicant to adhere not only to the county regulations and environments, but also the state's will allow him to maintain salvage vehicles for personal use. In this regard, it becomes a compatible use. Now, according to the discussion we've had tonight, you know, either way, he's going to be forced to clean up, we're just not sure of what degree, but we are at least positive of the number of cars, you know, if not approved tonight, it would be limited to nine inoperable. If approved, it would be 20. C, whether the proposed use places an undue burden on the existing transportation service facilities in the area affected, and if so, whether such additional transportation service facilities can be provided. The applicant has not requested to make this a commercial operation. His request is only to maintain essentially a vehicle graveyard as defined below. This means there will not be an increase in vehicular or pedestrian traffic. No water is available if that service is ever repaired, so that's really not an issue. Looking at D, whether the proposed use is made necessary or desirable because of changes or changes in condition, no area affected, there are no changes being made that would make this a necessary request, however, it would be a request as a result of a KDOT violation notice. E, the length of time the subject property has remained vacant or undeveloped as zoned, this is not applicable, the subject property has not been vacant. F, the suitability of the applicant's property for the proposed, this applicant has a maximum screening barrier on the south side of the proposed salvage car storage location. The property is located within a thousand feet of Highway 18, and thus must maintain the state standards and screening as well as other requirements. If approved, there are two residences to the south of the applicant, and the previously stated screening would block the salvage car from being viewed. G, the recommendation of permanent professional staff. Staff recommends approval based on the conditions listed below and because it shall not be a commercial operation. H, whether the proposed conditional use would be in conformance to and further enhance the implementation of the comprehensive plan. The proposed condition use permit request would be in conformance with our comprehensive plan, however, it does nothing to further enhance its implementation. I, whether the relative gain to the public health, safety, and general welfare outweighs the hardship imposed on the applicant by not upgrading the value of the property by approving the proposed conditional use. And currently, the applicant faces two options, either clean the property up and become in conformance of state and county regs, or be allowed to conditionally operate a salvage yard on his property. Either option allows for a gain of public health, safety, and general welfare of the area. J, whether the proposed conditional use, if it complies with all conditions upon which the approval is made contingent, will not adversely affect the property in the area affected. In this instance, the approval of conditional will not adversely affect the property. It will force a cleaner, more controlled environment in which the applicant can maintain their salvage cars. K, such other factors as may be relevant from the facts and evidence presented in the application. The applicant has maintained a vehicle graveyard on this location for several years, and is the opinion of staff, no matter the result of the clearing, the property shall be cleaned up. And then the staff recommendations as far as conditions, no more than 20 inoperable motor vehicles will be on the property at any given time. All inoperable motor vehicles must be titled appropriately. All vehicles titled as non-highway vehicles must be reported to the Dixon County Appraisers Office. Number four, must maintain screening around the location of salvage vehicles. Five, must maintain compliance with all relevant state and federal regulations. And six, at any time, no commercial activity be allowed on this property in relation to this conditional use permit. That is the golden factors and the staff recommendation. Is there any further discussion? Point of a motion. So I entertain a motion. If you feel we need more discussion, we can have a motion table this issue for next month.
Chairman, I would move that we would deny permit DK-1351. Because KDOT is the one that started it, let them do what they need to do. And then based on positive feedback from all the neighbors about the quality of individual we're dealing with, we come back and look at it another time if he wants to reapply after it's cleaned up per KDOT approvals. They're the ones who want it cleaned up, let them see to that. And then we can look at it again if we want to after, after that's done, which would, which would be consistent with everything, especially item I, where it says he has two options, either clean up the property and become compliant with state and county regs, or we do a conditional use permit and allow him the salvage yard. And I'm saying that option one there, clean up the property, become compliant with state and county regulations, as KDOT is suggesting, do that first, and then if one reapply, they can. But for now, we deny it. That's my motion.
Second. All right, it's been moved and seconded that we deny, that we deny DK-13-51 for Mr. Melvin All in favor of denying motion, the motion, raise your right hand. All opposed? It has been denied, and this is a recommendation to the county commission. Dustin can explain to everyone again the proper procedures after this.
What will happen is we will take it in front of the county commission. There is, go in front of the county commission, go in front of the county commission on the 26th of September for their, their discussion and their view of the county commission's recommendation. And then from there, if it's, if they vote to deny or approve, they're the final decision.
All right, thank you, guys, for your public comment regarding this. We'll move on to item number five on our agenda, conditional use permit DK-13-52. Dustin, can you give us some background on this one? We'll go and correct all of those back.
Towards the beginning, August, the applicant entered my office and they were requesting a building permit for an fairly large agricultural use building, about 20,000 square feet, could in the store and work on their own vehicles and agricultural equipment. And during the discussion, they asked what it would take to make it a commercial operation. So I advised them that they have to go through the conditional use permit application process, and they decided to go ahead and do that. They gave me the application. About a week later, they showed up with the information and everything else that you see attached here. They had already kind of taken into consideration the size of their building, certain things, drainage, for instance, they'd already taken that into consideration before coming into my office. And then they had already kind of pointed out what they were working on from there. So that's kind of where we are with it on my end, this far.
Would the applicant like to address these?
Cody Chase, 2798 Fair Road. I want to speak on behalf, at this point, of John Chase. I'm here tonight with my dad, John, my mom, Kirby, and my wife, Becky. Four or five years ago, we started thinking about, I guess I should read it, we operate a family farm in northwest Dixon County and a small trucking company that we run in about 30 states in the U.S. Our business keeps expanding in our trucking and our farming, and we are outgrown, our shop we're working in. Four or five years ago, we started planning for this, to build a bigger shop. When people in the community found out that we were looking at this, they kept asking about would we ever consider opening a commercial shop? I am a certified mechanic, and they knew that, and a lot of farms in the community are getting more semis and trailers, and there's a lot of farmers that probably don't take care of them in 100% the way they should be for DOT regulations, and it isn't from the lack of them trying, it's more the lack of knowledge of what to look for. So we decided to go ahead and pursue this some more. Dustin went ahead and approved us for building our shop. Basically, what we're asking here tonight is to rezone the shop for commercial with offices on it. We've looked into, if you would look at our map that we've drawn on there, it turns out that we've looked at a lot of things on there, tried to put in everything that we are hoping and thinking and trying to do. Dustin, that was our first big concern, was water drainage. We have lots of other buildings around there. There's a very large hay shed to the west, so we have opted ourself, and took it on upon ourself, to put in drainage, underground drainage, to run down to a detention pond next to the creek that will spill into there. I also have asked Col Valley for a quote on what it would cost if we have a future problem with drainage. They have not given me their bid yet. I'm guessing, I've been told it will be in that $600 to $700 range probably, but they have not given me a quote. We've pushed a lot of trees out around the farmstead to do this, so we've put in there that we want to put some more windbreaks to the north and to the east. We have also put on the south side where we might, where we would like to maybe in the future put some signs for advertising and where we'd like people to go, also a future driveway. That's all stuff that we're looking at. Don't know yet if we're gonna do it. In our offices, there will be bathrooms in there, and we have a permit already from Randy Barton for septic tank and a new septic system out there. We've, I guess we've put a lot of thought into this, and hopefully we're doing it right. We feel this is a very good thing for the community. If you look in there, there is three letters from people in the area that are for this. There also is a letter in there from a neighbor or land, land neighboring person that is for it, to do it, that cannot be here tonight. I also have probably five to 10 verbal confirmations with people in that area, businesses, a very large electrical cooperative that wants to try with us to do some mechanical work. This will be a business that will have extra employees working at it for people in the community and service the area. Is there any questions?
Tony, that's a detention pond proposed?
Yes.
You're definitely gonna put one in?
It's already there.
It's already there? The pond's there, okay.
A lot of this, a lot of the drainage and everything was pre-worked for the, just the ag building on its own.
Okay.
The ag building has already been permitted. This is to allow them to use it commercially.
Okay. So the drainage are already taken care of?
Yeah, most of the drainage are already taken care of. You'll see in there that we put in, that because of the size of the building, it's 20,000 square feet, that if drainage isn't handled or we need to review it, that if, commercially, if myself and John Goff, the county engineer, will review it and look at it. That's why I advised them early to, you know, get a price for Col Valley, just so you know if we have to do it, and so that we're all aware of it and looking into it.
Also on here, that there's another detention pond that we have actually dug. We had to put a lot of filter in for this building, so we actually, since this was done and turned out, we've dug another one down at the end of this waterway so it would fill up to help control some water. We do get some flooding in the lower ground. This building is nowhere close. If it floods, Avalon's in a lot of trouble, so, you know, we're not in a floodplain there, but we are trying to help hold some of that water. One question I had have is, did have, is somebody asked about extra vehicles on the road. We do live on a county maintained road, gravel road. I'm really, at this point in time, not expecting any more than three to five extra vehicles. That would be a hard one to say, because we are in and out a lot with our farm, and there's a lot of traffic on that county road. There's a lot of farm-to-market stuff with cooperatives, it's a main county road, so there is quite a bit of traffic on it. So, you know, that could be an issue, but in my opinion, three to five extra vehicles a day would be the most on my part for that, so.
Most people would bring their semi there, drop it off for your repair, and then come and pick it up, and in and out, basically.
Yep. And I think it also states in our letter that we talked about some, selling some parts too and stuff out there, so that's in there too.
Now, the 20,000 square feet, is that just the shop, or is that the machine storage?
That's just the shop.
That's just the shop.
And that's all we're just, and the shop part is all we're zoning commercial. The back part of it's just storage for machinery and stuff for us, so nothing for the commercial part.
The building would be located in this area here, and the floodplain runs down here, so they're out of the floodplain as well.
Does most of the traffic come off Fair Road since it's a blacktop? I mean, I know farmers come from any direction, but majority of the time?
Majority, yes. Majority comes from Fair Road, in which there's quite a few residents to the west of us, so, you know, there's a lot of people that live within a mile either way or two miles. way, or two miles of Fair, of 2700 Avenue, that do, mainly more people to the north that do travel 2700 to stay from going to 18 Highway or another way.
2700 is a really good rock road, yeah.
It is a good rock road, since the county has let the township maintain it, yes.
Amen.
How far is your, how far is your building located off the Fair Road?
Off Fair Road, a mile and a quarter west.
And then, we're, you're what, another five, six miles from Solomon Road? Solomon Road's west.
Four and a half, four and three quarters miles.
And the reason I bring that up is I talked to Martin Tannahill, because what you're looking at, right, I'll get, I'll get the location drawn, but there's a bridge in here, a structure, a structure in here, a structure over here, and a structure over here. And you'll see in the conditions I put to abide by the weight load limits. And Martin, the road and bridge department was telling me that a lot of times what they'll do for super heavy loads is have them come up Solomon, Solomon Road, so if need be, if you're dealing with a very huge double duly four-wheel drive tractor, you can have them come up Solomon Road if you have to, so there are other ways to get in other than trying to take it over a minimum weight bridge. So it's, it's a pretty prime location for it.
Yeah, I was just asking because of, you said a mile and a quarter from Fair?
Yeah.
Now, see, that's not very far on that county road.
No.
You're coming off of a good.
There is, there is two bridges on that, between me and, and Fair Road, and they have dropped a weight limit on one a couple years ago. Nobody really told us why, but hopefully, the county can keep up maintaining the bridges with us, but we're, it's still getting by fine.
What are the weight limits on those bridges?
Martin said he'd go out and look at them today, looking at them, and I didn't get a chance to hear back from him.
Thirty-seven ton is what the big bridge is.
He thought, he thought the smaller one was down around the 15, but.
It ain't that small.
It's not that small.
No, they're both between 35 and 40.
Then it must not have one up here on Eden End?
I think they're both for semis, they're both between 35 and 40 ton.
Well, and my, and my point is just if, you know, if this gets approved, and you know, we can help develop a business, you know, in the county and keep tax dollars here and employ people. I don't know what the bridge replacement rotation is, I don't know what that is, that's a, that's a commissioner and a.
It's a ten, ten-year plan.
Yeah, but, you know, maybe.
The regent would put in a 53.
Okay, so that's 10 years.
Plus or minus.
All I'm saying is, if we have an opportunity to help develop a business in the county, maybe that could be an additional point to the commissioners, hey, if these bridges have been lowered, there's some reason for it, can we just give them an extra special look? Is there an opportunity to maybe, do they need to be replaced sooner than later? That's all I'm saying, just to just help support the business and the community.
Really, the only way in our area that we knew the bridges were lowered is I happened to go home one night and they put new reflective tape with the number, that's the only thing noticed that we got about them or anything, so.
You want to do something to think about?
Are there any other questions for the applicant? All right, public comment regarding this conditional use permit?
Terry Swern, you're at Look 550, 2700, that's actually my place to the southwest of them down there. Been out there since '06, April 1st, '06 we moved in. I drive by it every day. Absolutely concede no reason why you folks would not approve this. They keep their place up, John and Kirby and Cody have always been great neighbors. If they put a few signs up along the road saying that there's something there, that's a good deal. We're bringing some business to town. Lord knows, this town needs a little. If we can keep it from going to Salina, that's money that stays here. And like they said, once they turn it over to the township, 2700 is a great road. When the county had it, they had some issues, we've got that resolved, it's a good road. I believe they'll do everything they say they're going to do, they always have as neighbors in the past. I'm going to be the closest one to them as near as I can tell. Gene might be closer if we got the tape measure out, but we're going to be pretty close, but I'm going to be the one that's driving by the signs and everything every single day, morning, noon, and night. I'm going to be the one going by. I see absolutely no reason we wouldn't approve this.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else, public comment? Any more questions for the applicant?
I would only make one comment, I think the applicant's done their homework pretty well.
Thank Becky. Becky's a good drawer, if you look in the picture.
Well, in that defense, we had a lot of questions, and Dustin has been wonderful at emailing, calling us back. We got the application, and we were like, oh my goodness, we can't fill this out. He went step by step and explained, you guys have somebody very good to deal with, that his doors always open, and did not make us feel dumb. You guys are very lucky to have him.
I'll second that.
And we'll prove that. Thank you, Dustin, for your work. Any other comments from, from you regarding the administrative report?
Not particularly, no. The biggest thing, as just everybody covered with them, is the possibility, because of the floodplain, of future issues of drainage, but I think we've covered it very well to begin with. And that's why I put in there that if there were any issues arise, that we review it, not, you know, not adhering to, it's a lot likely to do with the ag machine, if issues arise, we'll review it, you know, and we'll see what the issues are, because it may be that there's, you know, one day we go across there and there's water running across the road, they recognize it's because one of their detention ponds needs to be a little bigger, that, you know, we may not even get a Call Valley report for that.
Big enough for any will do that with or without their building.
Yeah, so.
I couldn't attest to that.
The building going regardless, because it's an act, whereas a commercial use of that.
The commercial use and the addition of their office space and stuff. But, yeah, the shop, the shop is going up for ag use regardless, it's whether or not they can do a commercial operation out of it.
And you can always put your comments in the form of a letter to the commissioners with those specific items that you talked about, to call those out, I think would be appropriate.
Any additional questions or discussion? If not, I would entertain a motion.
I make a motion that we approve agenda item DK-1352 with all of staff recommendations.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that we approve DK-1352 with all of the additional conditions, which I'm going to review here. Number one, all relevant state and federal regulations will be followed. Number two, drainage will be observed and if needed, altered by the zoning administrator and county engineer. If issues are discovered, recommendations for improvement will be made following a drainage study to be paid for by the applicant. And number three, abide by all local bridge weight standards. So we've been seconded that we approve this. All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed? Motion passes. Thank you all for your patience tonight and for public comment.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we move on to agenda item number six, new business and old business.
We have some voting to do and some removal of members to do. So, we need to find a new, new vice chair, and we need to remove Cindy Roberts, because she, this is her third meeting and not showing up, so. That's, that's going to be our new business for the night.
So do we need a motion?
I would move that we nominate Walling as the assistant or vice chairman, and nomination ceases.
I don't wish to change it, was I wish they had a.
He's seconded.
Rock. Yeah. He's seconded that Walling be the vice chair. All in favor, raise your right hand? All opposed?
Freehand, Walling.
Can you oppose, Walling?
I'm abstaining.
It doesn't matter.
I think the pay's better.
Yeah, I'm sure.
With or without, Walling's right handed. All right.
Madam Chairman, I would make a motion that we remove Cindy Roberts from the zoning commission board for failure three, that they could even last not to appear.
All right, it's been moved and seconded that we remove Cindy Roberts from the planning commission due to her three absences from our meetings. All in favor, raise your right hand? All opposed? It passes. Next?
Old business. The county commission approved the three-mile radius outside of the, outside of the towns in the Ag 40. They kicked back the homestead part of it, the third page that described, you could take a piece out of the middle. They did that on my recommendation, because as I got to talking with, more with the GIS department and stuff on it, after, after we had talked about it and some of the questions you guys have raised, I decided that, I recommended to them that they pull it back, because I think we could work better, or I can work better, get a little bit more definite, definition into it. And a question that Donida actually raised when we were talking about it, was something that I kind of paid attention to, was we left the Ag 40 alone, or the Ag 80 alone in terms of size, what, you know, you still have to have 40 acres, but like you said, doesn't make a lot of sense to leave it the 40 acres for, you know, for splitting out a little home and a little parcel. And so, I think we should look at a minimum for just that portion, you know, so that they have to do the administrative, there has to already be a home there.
There's a homestead act inside.
Yeah, and do it in a smaller parcel for, for just that, instead of, you know, like we did, instead of the whole thing, just, just for a little few homesteads that we have out there. But that won't be until either October or November, because I've got to reword it, I've got to take it to Doug, Doug Thompson, I've got to get some other people involved, so that'll be a while. I'm going to try for October, so just a fair warning, but I'll let you know a couple weeks in advance. If, you'll know, because I'll have to put the notice in the paper in the next week or two if I'm going to do it, it'll probably be November.
Do we have any other applications for October?
Nothing, that's, that's it, so.
So, the question is, Jennifer asked about the applications, nothing's met the deadline then, so.
Nope, nothing's met the deadline.
So we're, we're safe in saying there is none for October.
There's nothing for October.
Free in October.
You know how something will come in tomorrow?
I know.
And if something comes in tomorrow, it's for November, so.
Okay, I understand.
Don't feel like you have to hurry on that other piece then, Dustin.
Take your time.
The thing is, is they tabled it for November, they tabled it to October.
Okay.
But that was when I told them I might be able to get it in. But I'm going to try my, my hardest to get stuff in for it, but I don't think I'll get it done. I imagine I'll probably be closer to November, because I want to take in that minimum acreage for it.
Well, you said you did have even a neighbor, Donida's, that was asking about that a month ago or so, so there are people that have questions about it, so we don't want to.
I'm glad, I'm glad.
Needlessly wait.
Yeah, the, there's been, ever since it went into the papers for public comment about the Ag 40 thing, I've had a lot of questions about Ag 40, different land division and all that, so I'm keeping record of that, so that when, when we have the next meeting on that, I can actually bring numbers to you of questions. So we know, kind of get a feel for, for how many people are asking questions, we're actually going to get. So far, I've had three applications for the three-mile rule already.
Really?
Yes.
Good.
So, they're, they're taking advantage of it.
So no meeting in October at all?
More, I'm going to safely say no meeting in October.
Okay.
It'll be November.
We have witnesses.
And you thought you two were still being recorded.
Actually, I stopped the video a while.
So now there's no proof.
Public is still here.
Yeah, we have witnesses.
That's okay. It was a glitch.
All right, and any newer old business, Dustin?
That's as much as I can put forward at this time.
All right, anything else? All right, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Seconded.
So moved and seconded that we adjourn those in agreement, raise your right hand, and then leave. All right. So.